EMS is run by our funeral homes. And since then, we decided that it was time to evolve into something a little bit more practical than padding the funeral homes' pocketbooks by just saying, you know, we can't do anything, we'll just go back to the shop. It was in the early seventies, mid-seventies, that all of the larger towns that were incorporated at the time said, "We need to make sure that we give better care to our citizens." Lots of people went together. I know Manson did a bowl-a-thon, Rockwell City did a pie bake sale, I'm not sure what Pomeroy or Farnerville did, but it all started as volunteers because they knew that there was something that needed to take place inside their communities. We all know back in the seventies, most of our family was a one-income family. The husband went to work, the wife stayed home, not always, but that's how EMS started, was the homemakers knew that there was a reason and a passion for moving EMS and helping their communities. So that's where it all started, was in the seventies. And as I speak, you're gonna know that every twenty years, we have an involvement in EMS. So we're in the mid-seventies, now we're in the mid-eighties, and everything was running strong. I started in EMS in nineteen ninety-five. I started as a volunteer in Manson. I responded to a paper ad on a storefront, which most people did. And I've been in it since nineteen ninety-five, minus last year. I gave it up because I felt that it would be a conflict with my new position with Rockwell City. In that timeframe, in nineteen ninety-five, there was a huge number of volunteers, twenty to twenty-five. And when we put together a two-week roster, you had to beg to be on that roster at least two or three times. And that's where it was. As the standards change, as the state and the national registry demand more time and energy, it takes away from your family life even more than just going on a call for two hours and coming back. So the late Bruce Holm and I, and several other EMS members, met in nineteen ninety-nine, and we came up with the vision of Response 2020. Response 2020 was, "What's it gonna be like in twenty years?" Well, that's twenty-twenty, we're in twenty-twenty-two. So he hit it by two years. When we met in two thousand, we put together all the statistics, we found out that the average EMS provider was forty-five years of age at that time. Twenty years later, how old are they now?
My-
Jack's age.
Retired. But what I'm trying to get at is, every twenty years, we're seeing the volunteerism being less and less because of families having to work, both families, mom and, her husband and wife have to work outside, they have to, they have to give and take. And the give and take is, "I can't volunteer anymore." I know that the Boosters Club out here says, "We're not gonna have a concession stand because we don't have the volunteers." So it gets as minuscule as, "We can't fill a concession stand because no one wants to own up to volunteerism." When I was in school in the early nineties, what did we do? We consolidated school districts because we couldn't afford to teach locally, we had to bring other people in because of educators not being able to do what they do and whatnot. So on that same track, we've gone to the consolidation part of it, and that's where we developed Cowan County EMS in two thousand and seven. I was part of that membership that put this together in two thousand and seven. It was a good plan. At that time, it was two-thirds of the county, which is Rockwell City North. Lake City Ambulance was able to sustain themselves. Three years later, they hit the crash. So we had to jump back and make it a true county-wide service. Now, again, we were able to do the model that was put together in two thousand and ten, but as we know, membership, people wanting to do this type of work, again, the involvement came in and we don't have the members. So we had to take a step back and figure out what else needed to be done. And I will tell you this, I'm not a member anymore, I'm speaking as a citizen and I'm speaking as a longtime EMS provider of this county. I don't know if anyone's been in it longer than twenty-seven years, minus Jack. So I've seen this, I've gone through the trenches, and we're at a point now that is very critical. I know that there was a change made with the system, moving it from twenty-four, sixteen hours, eight hours on call, to twenty-four hours duty call, moved it to twenty-four-hour shifts, twelve-hour shifts, whatever would work to allow members to come here to work. And since the last Tuesday meeting, Carrie had the members that wanted to come and work here. They had the conditions of employment, and I can tell you that there are several members that last Tuesday's vote, they're done, they don't wanna come here to work. We're talking two paramedics, three paramedics, four EMTs that are certified, a couple more that are in class, they liked what they saw here, and they were wanting to go back to school to do this. So I'm asking that we readjust some things, so that a way we can give this a chance. I'm the chairman of the EMS Advisory Committee. I called a special meeting on Saturday, it was a good meeting, we got a lot accomplished. One of the things, the points that I wanted to bring up, number one, was the essential We were able to come up with a draft, so that a way we can, we can start that model and adjust it, and that's an ambulance in all three towns, Manson, Rockwell City, and Lake City. To do that, we have to have the people. If we don't have the people, we can't do it. So with the potential members coming on as staff members, I believe we can continue the recruitment and make this draft work. The second one was discussing the, we have the EMS Advisory Council, and our job is to look at statistics, we look at how to improve the EMS system as a whole. Every, not every department, but a lot of departments within the county have boards. I know that when the Board of Health, we, the EMS went away from the Board of Health, now they're under your, your direction. I feel that it's important with a, with a large organization such as EMS, that there should be some type of a board that helps that middleman be the liaison of the EMS Department and the Board of Supervisors. I think that would be well-managed and well-received on both ends. The last one is that we discussed your last vote or motion on last Tuesday, moving the May one deadline to July thirty-first. The reason for the July thirty-first is giving a chance to prove that this new model that's put together is saving the county money. And if I'm not speaking correctly, let me know, but this new model would save the county five thousand dollars a month. So instead of, you know, making the overtime continue where it is, let's give this other, this other thing a shot and prove to you that it's saving overtime.
Mike-
Yes?
Since you invited comment on that-
Yes.
-it's five thousand dollars a week.
A week. Sorry. And that's with the twenty-four hours-
With the twenty-four hours, but move down to the three-person staffing model until we can become fully staffed.
Correct.
My, my understanding is, is that it's cheaper than the model that was introduced last Tuesday? Is that correct?
Based on my calculations, yes.
Okay, so-
Based on my calculations.
Yes, I-
Which, according to what the motion stated.
Say that again.
Not according to what the motion stated.
I guess I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, right now, you have a three-person board, right? Or three crews going out. So two of them go out, and then one'll go out, and you hope somebody shows up to drive, right? That how it's set up? Mike, on that Wednesday night meeting, when you're talking about during your training, you said a driver can't put on a collar, you said that will not work.
Not according to EMS system standards.
So, so now then you're saying this three-person board then should not, or three crew members shouldn't work, and what you stated there, that somebody can't show up and help out then, right?
As, as the members that are wanting to come in, you're gonna have a fully-staffed ambulance with an EMT and a paramedic.
But it was supposed to go to July first, right? So Carrie asked.
What's that?
So you're gonna run up, no, Carrie's first thing was to July first, she's gonna have a three-person board, or three men, three-person crew, right? And you're saying that that doesn't work?
We started that March first, to get the overtime down.
Yeah.
That she kept asking throughout the winter, and you guys kept saying, "No."
Not throughout the winter, that kinda started in February, when we had a meeting downstairs, she brought it up, and I kinda questioned how that was gonna work with one person.
I was at a meeting earlier, and she just said, "Do you want me to go down?" And the guy said, "No, leave it," because she wanted the full crews.
So, that's what I'm saying. For, so on one side, you say it won't work, to have a driver be with a paramedic, now you're saying it'll work, for a paramedic to just be right off, wait for somebody to show up and help out.
I think what Mike is saying is that this is a temporary situation to a huge problem. And we can make it work with drivers that are in school, finishing school, have an understanding for what we do, until we can get them all hired and trained appropriately.
So if you're gonna run a three-person crew to July first, how do you plan on training them?
They go on calls with us.
So there'll be a new person on, two people there.
Well, how are you gonna train anybody? That's how you always train people.
That's what I'm saying, is if you actually read the motion, it states that you'll put two people in Rockwell City first. Once that's fully staffed, then you look at moving them down to Lake City. Then, once that's fully staffed, then you come back up for the third person. And when I talked to Dave, he says he could get a driver, so once Manson is ready, then you move that person up there with the driver that's up there in Manson. Is how that, that-
I didn't read it that, I didn't read it that way, I'm sorry. I thought everything was a fact of May first.
Yeah, so I'm not, then you gotta put five people on right away. This is, if you can staff two, great, it's in the center of the county. Then you go down to Lake City. Then you go back to the one person, when they're ready, you move them up there. So when the ambulance is gone from Rockwell City, you still have one in Manson, you still have one in Lake City. You shouldn't have to move either one, because they can still come to the middle, they come to the middle just as fast as the middle can go back out to them. So, I guess I'm not seeing what the issue is, because right now, when you say it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars more, that's if you staff everybody right away. But if you start putting on all these people right away, it's gonna not be the hundred fifty thousand dollars more. Right?
Well, you have that, it'll be, that's, starting May first, we terminate the trial basis for the twenty-four-hour full-time, presented on June eighth of twenty-one, replace it with twenty-four-hour shift with sixteen-hour duty time, eight hours on call, starting with the two-person scheduled ALS located in Rockwell City, followed by staffing a second person.
Followed.
But you're not saying like, at time, it sounds like you're gonna do, do, do. And we don't have the numbers for that, unfortunately.
But starting, then following, so you start and you fill the one first, then you follow with the next one, then you follow with the third one.
So you're gonna have them work, and then two dollars and fifty cents due the night?
No. Never said two dollars a night.
That's what on-call is.
On-call is two fifty.
We talked about trying to change the on-call at night to at least like, like half day.
To duty call.
So we're higher than what everybody else is at night.
But that's true, we're working to go at two by two.
On-call is-
On-call is two dollars and fifty.
Right, so it's just duty call is what we call it.
But that has been voted on yesterday. We're trying to work on the hospital, you know, if you're helping work it down there, and help it bring back residents, I think that oughta work a little bit more down there, but maybe you guys will think more different than that. Christie's trying to work on, and I'm sorry, Christie, that I was thinking a PRN with thirty-six hours, was still part-time, she said, "No, that's full-time." So we're trying to work on something for like an on-hospital, on call, we're three, or not hospital, a weekend call that has three twelve-hours. This, that has not gotten there yet. So we're, we're still trying to work on this stuff, it's something to put together, so that can still be accomplished in the twelve-hours, but then if you do that, we have to somehow figure out how to word that, so that everybody else turns around and says, "Okay, now I'm just gonna work twelve-hour shifts and just work four twelve-hour shifts back-to-back." Because if, if you look at it, when you got three people running twenty-four hours on there, it takes more people to run that, so you can staff what I'm talking about quicker than what with the sixteen and eight. And part of that, I know, was talked about, what, clear back to the sixteen and eight, it says nothing about on-call and weekends. So technically, the only hospital, or the only place around us that you can work, that you don't do on-call, is at Fort Dodge Fire. If you work up there, 'cause it was thrown out too, about if we wanted two crews up here in Rockwell City, we have to do like the other counties up there, we'd have to do the twelve and twelve, twelve duty, twelve on-call, and the other crew being the opposite, on-call and on-duty. We were told that won't work, nobody wants to work up here for twelve hours on-call, whereas they do it the two counties to the north of us. SAC is sixteen and eight. You go down to Carroll to work, you work twenty-four hours down there, then you're twenty-four hours on-call. It sounds like nobody wants to do that, so we're trying to figure out, how can we do this, and how can we get it underneath the budget? Because if we go over budget, you guys wanna see the general fund? Because you guys all know that we have like, is it seven or nine different categories where the money goes in? General fund is what pays you guys the salaries, that's tied in with most of all the offices up here. Once we, that thing right now, Robin did some figuring on that again last week, but that's like a million dollars over budget right now. In two years, that's gonna be over budget, we're gonna have to lay people off. So what offices, you guys, if we go with your plan, what other offices do you guys think that we should start laying people off of, so we don't go broke? That's what I'm saying, this has gotta fit inside a budget. It's not that we wanna take this away, or change it back from the twenty-four-hours full-time pay, it's gotta fit in the budget.
Two full crews in Rockwell City would be a lot cheaper than trying to spread it out everywhere, and then it would be centrally located.
And we could still take transfers for Stewart.
How would it be cheaper, Linda? Down there, if you got a crew up here, a crew goes down there, I think it said like, David and I talked about this when he said, "It's a money loser."
You have six, you have six people you're paying as opposed to four, the way you're talking.
But this is still trying to get an ambulance in each one of the counties, Dave wants an ambulance up there, and that's why we said we put this together.
He wants a new ones up there.
They got two hundred calls, if you look at your sheets in there, in Manson, two hundred twenty here, hundred ninety down in Lake City, and I don't think the hundred ninety totally includes five-one-four-three-three that comes over into the Calhouna ways. So they're not that far off on calls. So if you say, because I know, David and I had quite the argument about, I said, "If Manson's getting one with two hundred people, why does Lake City not get one with a hundred ninety?" Then if you look at Lake City-
But Lake City does have one, we keep forgetting that.
They have a couple people on-call-
We're finding three on-call people everywhere.
Until they get burned out.
Why aren't they on-call for a long time there?
I know, and I've talked to Eric, and Eric's telling us, he's getting burned out.
That's what's happening everywhere.
So, yeah, so now-
But you know, you're talking to these surrounding counties that are all still looking for workers.
Everybody, nationwide, this is-
Right, so we wanna, okay, all right.
So now we need to help on the budget.
It has been.
Every state, every state.
It has been.
Yeah.
For ten years. EMS has been hurting for people.
It puts our counties against every other county.
So, so what we're talking is, you got three-man crew right now in Rockwell City with a paramedic and an EMT, or, and another paramedic, and you're telling us it's not gonna work, but it's okay to send it to Manson? One paramedic and then wait for a driver to show up?
Dave was saying that he could come up with a driver.
And you're telling us that doesn't work?
No, I never said that, Mike said that didn't work.
If the driver's qualified to help do ccallers and everything else.
Driver's not.
What they wanted to do was firefighters, they wanted to have firemen do that. Now, if you just take a layperson off the street to be a driver, you can't do that. But if you can sit down and make a skill sheet and, and work with the skills, the firefighters, they can do that. But I'm talking beyond that, if you wanna put an endotracheal tube down, or, or whatever, they can't do that.
I know.
Because, you know, bigger, bigger skills. But, yeah, I mean, I was talking citizens, drivers, you can't do that. If you were to pull someone off the street and say, "Hey, you drive, hey, help me put this ccaller on." No, that's what I meant by drivers.
I don't have a problem going to Manson and letting those guys drive. Those guys are there, if we need them, they're there, every call, every time. I don't have a problem with that.
Is there any, since this is a problem, is there any group getting together to lobby the legislative to change some of the, loosen up some of the regulations and stuff that has stifled volunteerism?
It all went national. We're under a national standard. They, they took away the state's privileges of having different certifications. Now they went nationwide, and it's now emergency responder, EMT, advanced EMT, paramedic, that's it, that's nationwide.
Okay.
Which, which, which made me go down from a paramedic to advanced EMT. I'm stubborn, and I'm like, "I'm not taking that damn test again." So they, they screwed up as far as I'm concerned. They wanted me to take the same exam that I did after paramedic school, to say, "Hey, take this test again, then we'll give you a paramedic certification again."
We also had two A EMTs, or EMTIs at the time, in Farnerville, that let it go, and just took EMT because of it.
To answer your question about in terms of lobbyists, there is an organization in Iowa, IAMSA, which several of us are a member of, that advocate for that at the state, and I've burned up my legislator's phone plenty of times, and Carrie, as well as I, sit on state committees to advocate for the visibility of any resources available to be sent to the local area for bolstering of our resources, of our staff.
Mike, thanks for giving the history, that's very good, and I wanna explain a little bit the history of the decision that was made. We've been talking with your boss almost weekly, she's for several years, I mean, she comes in a lot, we talk about, and her concerns for your guys' welfare and providing services in the county is very high, and we appreciate that. How many months ago it was when we came to the point where, hey, overtime has come to this amount, I think it was two hundred thousand dollars at, at that time? That was, and that, don't, that's none of your guys' fault. And I don't blame you guys, and I want you to all know that we appreciate what you do. All this stuff is about the money and making it fit within what we have. So if there's any feeling that we don't appreciate what you do, that is completely wrong. The people of Cowan County appreciate what you guys do for them, and we rely on you. We need to work together to make this. So, once this was coming, everything that Carrie has ever done and come up here to bring in more people and to make your guys' job easier and better, there's always a price to that, and it works or it doesn't work. Raise salaries to bring more people in, that will work if we get people in, but it also, if it doesn't, then if your salary's raised, then the overtime's higher as well. You guys get bump up, surrounding counties bump up to compete, because it's a very competitive job market that you guys are in. Then she came in with the twenty-four-hour plan, that was considered a temporary plan. Then over the last several months, it's been on her side to us, "We need to make a decision, we need to make a decision, we need to make a decision." And that's when it came up with the decision that very, apparently wasn't very popular, and I understand that now, and we're discussing it, so let's move forward nice and calmly and get to the point where we're providing for the county, and we're taking care of you guys as well.
Hey.
But understand, there is a budget limit, there's, you know.
Luke, since the Board of Supervisors made their motion last week, I know that Carrie was interviewing several people to build some positions, have any of them changed their minds?
Actually, I thank you for asking that question, I've got a prepared statement, if you don't mind.
After them.
So I received a, a message from one of the paramedic candidates, who actually grew up in this area. His name is Lucas, and, "Hi Luke, this is Lucas, sorry about this long message, I'm on shift and probably wouldn't have time to chat over the phone. I heard about the Board of Supervisors meeting the other night. While that motion is still in place, working for Cowan County is not really a feasible option for me and my family, since there will be a significant drop in the pay that we were expecting to be to bring for a pay job. That being said, I would really love to continue working for Cowan County if things change, but in the meantime, I've started the application process for other departments. I haven't told Carrie this because I know she's pretty stressed about this huge change, and is going on her medical leave on Monday. So I guess I have two questions. Would you be willing to be a reference for me on other applications? Would you also, and if you were able and willing, relate to the Board of Supervisors that because of their decision, I'm having to look for other employment to support my family and myself? Let me explain why I responded to him that I would be happy to sing his praises to whomever would listen." That person grew up in this area. That person, in the course of their Eagle Scout project, raised money to have AEDs placed throughout the swimming pools in this county, and those AEDs have been used on real patients. That person, when they sought to explore their future in EMS, had Carrie as their teacher. I know their education is top-notch. And when that person sought to work with me here at Cowan County, we had a knife drawn on us by a patient. And the way he behaved both before and after law enforcement subdued the individual showed quick thinking on his feet and a compassionate caregiving personality. I was sad to hear that he decided to pursue his furthering education out of state, and was ecstatic when I found out that because of this recruitment plan, it made him feasible to, to move here and pursue growing in this community with his family. I know this table mentioned before, what can we do to bring young people back into the area? I can tell you, this isn't it, this actually did the opposite. My reaction to these two motions, it kinda comes down to a three-fold. One, the decrease in pay, which the motion does say on-call, which means during the eight hours, we move down to two dollars fifty cents a hour. If it were to say duty call, then it would be different based on the current HR base It would be uncomfortable, and I would just bide my time until somebody offered me a better wage, which, in a management spot, Humboldt actually asked me to. I declined it because, again, this, this resolution wasn't a thing, and that's partly the drive, I'm not a fan of that. But then, to ask us to work, and we interpreted the resolution as immediately, May first, to ask our existing burned-out staff pool to work an additional fifty percent of hours in addition to what we were already working to, to make it work, and I understand that may not have been what you intended, but that's how we were then, was, is essentially intangible for me, and, and that's, that's pretty frustrating, the fifteen years that I've worked here. But the most affecting profoundly on mine was to ask Carrie, not ask the motion, saying as of May first, Carrie would need to fill all available shifts, potentially up to five twenty-four-hour shifts per week, when right now, she's, and I got her permission, right now she's currently receiving physical therapy for an injury that she succumbed to while on an ambulance call where a patient injured her. She's currently undergoing physical therapy. And tomorrow, she undergoes surgery for breast cancer, I got her permission to say that. And she will be recovering for that for some time. Would it be safe to say that you knew she was gonna have surgery soon? And would it be safe to say that you knew she still might be out of commission come May first?
And it also said, when she was able.
When she's able.
And I, I appreciate that reading between the lines, however, the motion does say May first.
But she was told in this room, and Luke, that also started clear back, when you said restructuring. There's not too many departments out there have an office minister in there, working in there, so we're trying to figure out, how can we keep that, plus, if you talked to, I just remembered. [inaudible] She helped build-
I have a question.
... that's helping to, a director's job, that she helped build- She helped fill it on shift.
And I, I appreciated that challenge that you have ahead of you. But, the black and white does say, May first. And you knew that she would be out on medical, May first. And I have a hard time working for human beings that would be willing to do that to another human being.
So, what date can you put on there then? Just when she'll be healed up? This was done without any intentions on that. Obviously said, I knew, she said she was going to be gone. She never told us what it was for. And that's what we.
She just said she had cancer.
Were you on the phone?
Yeah.
It was also done without any consultation of the EMS advisory council, which, correct me if I'm wrong, you said.
And what's the, but EMS advisory council, it advises the board of supervisors, right? But I know Mike made a, what's the bylaws, Mike, what's the bylaws? Mike, and what are the meetings supposed to be, the EMS advisory council?
Every three months, I believe.
May and November.
Yep, two months, two times a year.
So, when you made the comment, you didn't know I was on the board? One was canceled due to COVID, one in October. Remember, this is a part-time job up here. I also farm. You had it on October 7th. I won't be there probably if I'm in the field. The next one.
I, I farm too and I, I totally need to change that.
The next one, I was, uh, that, you, you and I both missed that one.
I know.
So, then the next one, that was after, that's when they talked about bringing Dave on. Then the following one, I think is when we had it up here for Pocahontas net. So, that got canceled. So, when you said that you didn't know who your representative was, I was basically at the same ones where you were and the other ones all got changed and I was at the other one. So, I want to point that out. And I know also, uh, Matt made a comment about wishes somebody would come out to the station and see what goes on and know what you guys go through. I, probably, most of you guys probably don't know, I'm also in the fire department and I was a first responder. But, like you're saying over there in Farnerville, I think what Steph, would we have five or six of us? And we all dropped off, you were a gate leader and the only ones left to respond. And I, when you said that we don't know what you guys go through, I really appreciate what you guys do. I've been on some pretty gory calls myself. Been on one south of town there where they brought in debriefing for the ambulance drivers. Never had one for us first responders. I, so I've been there, so I know what you guys go through. Not as much as what you guys do. Never had a knife pulled out on me. But I've been at some pretty gory scenes myself. And when it comes like, when you talk about driving out there, I do help out. When I can get there, I've driven, I think the SAC ambulance, probably five or six different times for those guys. So, I understand where you guys are coming from. My whole thing is, is guys, we've got to be able to, be able to pay for this. We could pay you guys double your wages. You're only going to work six months. We're going to be allowing ambulance for six months. So, it's one of these deals, we've got to make it fit within the budget. I just, there is no pulling money from one budget to the other budget. It's got to fit that $3.50 and whatever revenues we get. So, technically, if we aren't also doing any transfers down there, that's that much less revenues that we're pulling in. That makes it that much worse on us for our budget to make things fit. So, that's.
I have a question. Why does there have to be an ambulance at Stewart Memorial Community Hospital to take transfers? We can take transfers from the Rockwell City Station with two crews just as easily, just as efficiently, just as effectively as if a crew is stationed down at the hospital.
That's what I said earlier. Two people are here, two people down there. If Dave's got somebody up there, we get somebody up in Manson, we still have it all covered.
I'm talking about everybody in Rockwell City, two crews. Not six people, not five people, two crews, Rockwell City, Iowa, center of the county, equal times to the corners or pretty close to equal times.
Equal times to the corners, but quicker times in the middle. So, is it fair to everybody?
I think you would, I think you would find.
It's more fair, in my opinion, if they're all in the middle than if Rockwell goes out and I have to wait for Lake City.
But you're supposed to try to get an ambulance.
But he's saying.
I understand that, but, but you guys also took over our ambulance and we're going to take care of us. So, I mean, I mean, that can go both ways.
Then we can go back to what Mike said when this thing started up. I was on there 2007 when it started too. It says that there'd be ambulances in Rockwell City covering northern two-thirds. We will work with the southern part to keep the ambulances going. We will. I was trying to find that paper there. It says, we will not terminate or try to basically get rid of any ambulance down there that they'll be incorporated into this system. And we're not doing that in this state of one ambulance in Rockwell City.
Because, is it because it's not affordable?
Well, it's not affordable.
To staff, uh, ambulance in Lake City and Manson? As well as Rockwell.
We don't have enough volunteers to do both right now.
But your volunteers are going away. I mean, I'm sorry, but I'm a volunteer on Farnerville. We might have seven, eight, four, maybe five of us show up.
So, we have two ambulances in Rockwell. You willing to go to that 12 and 12 shifts?
In the big picture though, if we have those paramedics that are in class right now, going to graduate in May, if they're paramedics in June, July, and if we get these other paramedics coming in and then we have more EMTs that are going to test and be hired, so there wouldn't be overtime. So, why wouldn't we do the deadline in July, hire like we need to, so there's no overtime and just have the four people in Rockwell to cover, then we wouldn't be looking at all that enormous overtime. We wouldn't be looking at the revenue of here and here and everything else and worrying about staff because we would have enough. And then we wouldn't have to be facing all this. I mean.
Steph, how much overtime do you have when we still run 24-hour shifts?
I'm PRN.
You still pay overtime? Because I did not realize too, that what, so Lucas, if you work more than 40 hours in one week instead of an average week, you have to pay overtime that week?
For full-time.
I, no, everyone.
Got pulled out for, for the US Department of Labor, phone call, a wage investigator from Detroit. Um, and I could have patched her in here, but, um, there may be, depending on what our certifications are, a way to move away from 40 hours a week paying overtime. You might go on a law enforcement schedule where, uh, at 14 days, this is brand new knowledge, at 14 days, you have to exceed X number of hours to hit overtime and at 28 days, you have to exceed. But it depends on your certifications. She's going to send me a lot of.
But they get paid for every hour of their way. Just not by, might not be time.
Recommend that we, especially if we're having people working six days in a row, 11 days in a row, that we have dedicated sleeping time. That is their recommendation. It is. They, they don't rule. They say you have at least paid minimum wage for eight hours, but we're not having people taking breaks.
I can, I can echo that. My job, anything over 86 hours is overtime in a two-week period.
That is correct.
So, we have three hours that we get paid regular time. Anything after that is overtime, unless it's holiday.
But they are still, this investigator, and I also talked to one in Des Moines with the Division of Labor, they're both saying that if you're running people six to 11 days in a row and you are not dedicating sleeping time, you may have a problem. People are going to get hurt, they're going to burn out.
But if we're fully staffed, we'd be running into that problem. Like, if we had four more paramedics, we wouldn't need to keep, like, having people work five, six days straight. I mean, there, it wouldn't have to be that way.
Steph, they're asking for 24 hours, two days at 24 hours, that's 48 hours.
Yeah.
And then also on your FM valet, we never brought this up. Technically, you can sit there and say that comes off when you, you're supposed to have an hour lunch break in your other breaks. We never said anything about that. Like I said, every other weekend, we don't want, every other weekend either. We're trying to staff that too, so you guys don't have that. I don't blame you. I wouldn't want to work for $2.50 on the weekends either. We're trying to figure out what we can do to make it the best for you guys to pick under our budget and that's how we came up with it. And I'll let you know that, uh, at the essential service meeting on March 9th, it was asked out of the supervisors, what are, what's our opinion of this? Of the essential service and how do we want this to go forward? So, to me, it sounded like we needed to come up with a, a plan. Carrie, when we had our EMS breakdown, uh, on the worksheet, she asked us that we need to hurry up and come up with a plan and decide or make up our minds so that you guys know what's going to go on. Then also on March 1st, the boarding meeting that she knew I was going to be gone, she tried to set up a meeting anyhow, being that I was going to be here. She admitted to that one, didn't she?
Yeah, I know. But there was a lot of confusion on dates of meetings.
But she turned around and asked on that one too, hurry up and make up your minds, what's going to go on? So, that's why this was put together. This was basically what the base is going to be, that we can try to pay out of our general fund. And if anything over that, if you guys, if we could put something together to sell to the public out there, that's where we go forward. So, if we can get a paramedic sitting up in Palm Ridge, we can get an ambulance out there. If they'll pay for that all the essential services, let's try and see if we can get them to vote on that. If they, if they want to switch from the 16 days to 24 hours, the people want that on there, we need that extra funding to help pay for that. So, if we can get that past the voters, let's go that way too. I mean, all this plan that they put together, look at what it's going to cost over and above what we're doing now and then you can come together with a dollar amount to bring to the public. So, we gave you, there's a plan there now for that. So, how, I guess, how are you guys going to pump up the dollar amount right now to tell them what you guys need? But I don't know how much the supervisors can put into this. And I can tell you right now, if that is fully staffed with the five people, it's going to be a stretch on that 1.4 million dollar budget, which she said that would be like $500,000 in revenue possibly coming in. That included a lot of transfers in that. And if you compare that, that's $900,000 roughly, just quick math. And if you look at SAC, they're underneath $500,000. If you look at Carroll, they're $500,000. We're putting $400,000, some thousand dollars more in there to put towards you guys to help you out versus other counties around us. And I'd like to also tell me what other county around us actually pays more than what we pay right now, even with the 16 and eights?
What other counties?
Or Dodge Fire does. Around us. Fort Dodge Fire, Mike, when you work up there 12-hour shifts and that, I will say you don't have on-call up there. Like I said, if you work down in Carroll, I don't know what the current one is. She said it was like $28 an hour.
It's $28 in areas.
Then the next day, you work 24 hours for $4.50. Average that out to what we pay, who pays more?
A lot of their people don't live in town. That's like our huge difference with our county is most of us live out of town. So, at Carroll, you can be at home and like SAC, they go home at night. They don't stay at the station. Same thing with weekends, so.
And if Carrie is willing to let that happen, I don't have any problems if you guys go home from 11:00 to 7:00 at night.
The problem is, is we live so far.
I can drive, I can drive 40 minutes home.
You have to be.
It's going to be an hour before you get an ambulance.
10 minutes, yeah. You have to be able to be to the station within 10 minutes, so.
Why wouldn't it work to keep this, this centrally located station in Rockwell City, have two crews, pay them 24 hours a day and be done and have people on-call in Manson? On-call in Lake City?
Because they said we'd still be running into overtime with 48 hours.
But if what Christie just got through to, would it?
That would be a big changer if, it wouldn't be overtime?
And then you're going to retain your staff you have now. I don't know that anyone would walk over that. And you're possibly going to get the ones that are saying, huh, nope, not going to do this.
You can still work two 24-hour shifts, how many hours is that a week?
We're just saying if it wouldn't be what Christie was saying, but.
It would be 96 in two weeks, so you're still 16 hours longer.
She did make it very clear that you would have to have specific fire training or law enforcement training to be included in that. Part of me thinks because we previously had a union and the union decided the 16 on and the eight hours of duty rate that our people do not qualify to certification. I said, it's worth exploring. But, um, she asked me point-blank, are you paying overtime for more than 40 hours a week? And I said, yes. She said, it's likely then that you are not going to qualify that based on your certification is really specific, but it, it's worth the look.
Unless her house has that training, would kind of be that.
Chris, what, what certifications are they talking about?
She's sending me, uh, she said a very lengthy document of certifications.
So, it, it could be the individual certifications of the employees or the certification of the service or combination of.
So, so which plan, the plan you guys proposed voted last Tuesday versus running three people like they have been? Which way's cheaper?
Well, three ways.
Three way would be cheaper. But how do you incorporate the new people in if you're only going to have three people working?
But what I'm saying, until we can get some answers and get this figured out, wouldn't it make sense to go with the cheapest of, the cheapest avenue?
First of all, the new ones coming in are going to have to orientation. So, that's going to take time to be able to get fully staffed. That's why that she was.
But that's not what it says with the three-person being in there. That's what I'm saying. We got more people. How many people does it take for a three-person crew?
But when you hire.
Three for two days. How about the other five?
Well, we'd be alternating. There's plenty of us to where we need to just do.
But the new people can't work by themselves.
So, there'd be a fourth, there'd be a fourth.
That's why we're asking for time to get everyone oriented.
Here's the difference. In two years from now, if we have new people, they still can't work by themselves. You're going to have to pay to train people.
I know. And where right now, it says, you know, three people, you can't train them. With this new plan, you can train them.
But how's that going to be still saving money though? Like, it doesn't seem like by cutting our pay from duty pay to duty and duty call pay, saving that money there is what's going to pay for those extra people in the training? So, is that where we're getting like the money from?
Five. That's, that's, I can't get my head to think different than three would be cheaper than five.
Cutting enough wages off of the other ones to make up for the other ones.
Early, right now, since she says she's going to run three people from May 1st. How are you going to orientate people in if you can only run three people?
Well, you're always going to have to orientate.
I know, but how can you do it if you can only have three?
You run it, you run it the same way as you would normally. It's just that extra orientation person is with that crew that's first out. They don't go with the single person that would respond. They go with the trainer who would be your medic that they would work with. So.
Can that person drive then?
No, they are with the non-drivers. So, typical call, your paramedic will be in the back with the orientee and then the EMT would be driving. And then let's say that call is done, they drive the ambulance back and/or if, then you start working them in on both sides.
Until they complete the necessary training, they cannot replace an essential member of the crew.
Right. Yeah. Just until.
Just until they get orientated.
And it doesn't have to be like 24 hours. It can be like.
And we don't.
It depends on the person, but a couple of weeks, three weeks.
It just all depends, yeah.
And the people who are orientating, correct me if I'm wrong, aren't allowed to go obviously into overtime. So, they, they stay under that 40 hours.
We don't, we don't put them on any overtime.
It's usually 12.
And we don't usually do 24s. We usually do the 12.
And.
So, you said it takes three weeks to orientate some of them.
We, we have a, we have an objective.
But, once they get orientated, if you only have a three-person crew, where are they going to go?
They just slip right into the rotation.
Yeah, they would be one that's on duty too. They would have qualifications though of like EMT or whatnot, so they'd be able to help do whatever, you know, they need to do.
This is where we're building back up to the two crews.
We don't hire just a driver.
Right now, Manson has Matt. Matt's supporting his own business. He's also in the fire department. We have a driver that lives in Manson that works for us.
That's going to take her.
She's through orientation. She's going to take an EMT class. And we have a paramedic that is moving into Manson. If our system doesn't change. If our system changed, he's going to Fort Dodge Fire. So, we're losing potential on-call people in a place that needs people to be on-call.
The paramedic that's, or the soon-to-be paramedic that's moving into Manson is me. I was one of the first employees hired on with the trial basis. I started June 22nd. I was down in Texas shooting on a national shooting competition, uh, when we got this new resolution. I tell you what. Have you?
They passed the battle.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion. I'm sorry. I'm not government. Shooting at a very mental sport. I had a very hard time shooting last week with this because we never got any sort of, uh, notice about it besides it happening right away. It kind of felt like a kick in the nuts a little bit. It kind of made me want to go to Fort Dodge Fire.
When you say you didn't get any notice, we talked, we're talking about this stuff in several, several meetings that Carrie was here. Did it ever get relayed out to you guys?
It did, but it never, we never got told that it was happening like, or that, like any relay, that, that, we were going backwards to this.
An agenda item or?
I know when you say an agenda item, Luke, and it says EMS updates, we also make motions when the sheriff or engineer. The same thing with the engineer. If you want to talk about motions, it's trial basis. There was no motion for the trial basis. So, it didn't ever start. The three-person crew thing was, she was just asking us on the phone. Said, we're in agreement if she wants to try that. There was no motion there. The only motion, because she kept throwing out at us all the time, is when were decisions made? Nothing's ever in the minutes about different things when we're talking about it. So, this put it in the minutes, so Carrie could come back and say, when was this decision made? Like I said, we got three other times that she was on us about, you guys need to hurry up and make your decision.
Do you know why that is? We, we have staff that is ready to walk if you do this. We have staff, possible staff, that's ready to come to us, but gonna say, nope, not gonna do it.
Everything we've been working for since Ju- July is gone.
You hired, and I say you, because you're part of the hiring and letting go. Dilly, Bee, Fallon, Katie, under this new trial.
Cynthia.
Cynthia.
Hunter.
Hunter, under this new trial, saying if this works, we're good. And now you're saying, oh, I'm gonna pull that rug right out from underneath you.
I do have a question. If, when we're fully, and I don't even know how many number we need to do the Lake City, Rockaway City, Manson, and kept it at paying them for the forty-eight hours they worked. Will that work? Is it the overtime that killed us, or is it the forty-eight hours?
When she said she's going to this new plan, I think it was six thousand dollars less than what the old plan was with overtime. But she also put in there, there's no, like, there's no cost estimate on what the overtime will be. It wasn't until we started doing budgets that we found out, I think at first time it was like a hundred and five thousand dollars over budget. We were never informed that it was going to be this high over on there. By the time she came in for the budget amendment, it was two hundred and ten thousand dollars over budget. That's why we said something has to change. There's no way we could keep paying for that. Like I said, preseason's gonna be foreloaded, so if you guys are all foreloading for a month and a half or so, what's the difference?
And on that two hundred thousand dollars, overtime's really not the problem, cause it still would've been a hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars over budget. If, if it would've been fully manned or something. So the numbers really didn't, are really not working out.
So if they kept the budget, there's gonna be a half million dollars over budgets.
But if they go back to this and stay at the three-person crew and move forward at that.
That three-person crew is allowing people to come in that have the orientation, that's.
Well, that's just here and there, that's not, that's a half, yeah, that's minor.
If you did the three-man crew and you hired, cause it sounded like Saturday that Cindy Carson said they're willing to pay now for a crew to work there.
When I talked to Cindy about this before, she says there's not as much to do at nights. So there won't be any pay, she said unless the crew is out, and when they come back in, she says I choose it when you guys are there anyhow, if you have to try and help out in there. But she says there won't be enough in there to help basically for them.
Would it work better for Lake City to just do seven-seven only?
Would it be better for Lake City to get their own crew?
Well, but even if the county were, if, if you just did a twelve-hour shift at the hospital.
Right.
Whoever you hired would just be there during the day if they don't go in at night.
They would be hired under different names.
Right, that would be fair.
And probably they'd be from that area.
Probably.
Cindy also said on Saturday that even in the night, the crew could do respiratory therapy, cause they don't have a respiratory therapist that night. And they could utilize those people to do the nebulizers.
But that's not all the time.
Correct.
But then, almost like, if you look at Carrie's plan, it talks about Lake City going to twelve-hour, twenty-four shifts.
Well.
With every other weekend, or you guys willing to work every other weekend out there on duty.
And they can, like, they were down to one.
Basically, that was set up.
I'm just trying to come up with ideas.
I know. That's why I said, I want everybody to think, try to come up with something to come back if there's something you guys think will work better. But I know, you guys were not listening when we were talking. Carrie's plan, when she said going to twelve-hour shifts, read her plan, it also says every other weekend. How many of you guys are willing to go down there and work and go every other weekend on call? That plan is set up to fail from the start.
But I think she was also thinking about hiring a crew that knew they'd be down there, correct?
But you're having a hard time hiring crews now, you think?
We're not having a hard time.
I mean, we've got a lot of people coming, it's just.
We were successful under the new recruit.
Yeah, just under that trial, we've been very successful.
They're on the hook, we just had to stop reeling them in.
You'd be that much more successful, but it won't fit under the budget. That's what we're trying to tell you, it won't fit.
And we're not asking, we're not asking you to double it again.
The three-person crew, correct? It fits under the budget, correct?
But just one.
Correct. I didn't, I wanna make sure that you and I are on the same page, cause you don't answer me, the other two have.
I'd have to look at it and run the numbers on the three-man crew. And then figure in the orientation on top there, cause that would possibly be underneath their budget to see if it fits. I don't know how many people they're gonna be orienting, and once they're done with three weeks.
We've been orientating since July. I mean, it's, it's all part of what's been.
And without vacation and sick leave, does it take about nine people to run a three-man crew per week?
You guys help me out with that.
Without, without looking at my notes, that sounds about right.
Well, you got Monday, Tuesday is one, Thursday and Friday's one. No, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, that's three crews, and if three is nine, plus you got Sunday left. How many people do you have right now?
We have nine full-time.
Nine full-time.
PRN that works every other weekend.
One, two PRM addicts.
Plus the new ones coming.
Well.
But that, that's what I'm gonna do, okay? So we got roughly enough to cover a three-man crew right now. Once they get orientated, where are they gonna go? Is somebody gonna start taking less hours so everybody's got hours?
But isn't our goal to at least get back to a two-person?
That's what our, I thought we were building for all three.
Right, so we could take transfers if we had a four-man.
It's still gonna cost to have crews in all three.
If, if you have extra people, you can put them on transfers and if the transfers make so much money, they oughta be able to pay more.
Are you gonna sit around and wait for the transfers, Dave?
Isn't that what?
I would, I would give maybe the transfers, cause I know they're.
If we had four and took the transfers, wouldn't that help pay for that extra? Like, if we started bringing in that revenue with having four and having full to where it's not paying like one person seven days straight with all that overtime. If we had four, full-time, took the transfers and brought in all that extra revenues, well, it cuts back on the overtime, that should almost figure out to where it wouldn't be like the numbers that you're talking about. It's.
Si- Cindy said on Saturday, she had to check with Jim to make sure the numbers are worth. But if there was a transfer, the transfer gets called out, people take it. She said if the numbers didn't work for the hospital, that she'd pay the crew double time. So that would be an incentive for a transfer.
They think he's under double time, that's not safe. But they've also stated this whole time, that if they don't get an ambulance back down there, that they'll try to do the essential service themselves. And they'll try to start up their own ambulance down there in the corner.
And then we go back to where we started this thing in the beginning and it'd make money again.
It's never been money again. It's never paid as well.
It'd be a lot closer than it is now, let's put it that way.
Anything with the general fund isn't gonna make money.
No, that's why it's there.
The decision to go down to a three-person crew, I thought it was intended to go through the end of this fiscal year to cut down on costs, that it wasn't a permanent loan. You know, it, it another, it was another temporary measure to control costs. So a three-person crew is not what the ambition was to last for much more than the end of the fiscal year, right?
And when we go back to the four, that's where, in seven months, we're two hundred and ten thousand dollars over budget. So if they go back on July first, back to the way it was, if these rules don't change, she's talking about, it'll be a half million dollars over budget again.
But if we go back to four and we have more staff.
Right.
There's less overtime.
A lot less overtime.
We'll have that under control because we have more staff.
Right, right. Cause that's where all the overtime came in, is like when, like, all the hours.
Picking up two shifts.
Well, yeah.
There were some of us that were working two and a half times what a normal person would work in a year. So I can't see how being full staff and working with a four-person crew.
We just gotta get the people to fill it, that's, that's what we said.
And you're not gonna do it under this ban.
We have, right, we have them.
And then we hit a wall.
But we do have them still if things don't change, like, we still could have Brandon and Dilly. You know, and Cynthia wouldn't leave, Dallas would still be there, we could get Lucas to come back in. We would have the numbers, not put the overtime drastically like that.
All those generals too, cause she's small.
To save within what you guys are gonna do.
We've, we've had maintenance done in-house, we, uh, have, we go through four different purchasing agencies and price check every medical piece of supplies we get, and if we save fifty cents here, then we do that.
We've cut back on drugs.
We, we've consolidated.
We've cut half our drugs in Hepburn.
Yeah, and each drug box has about four thousand dollars worth of medication in it, so we consolidated. That's a laptop. Yeah, so we, we.
Sorry.
But we are doing everything we can to try to compromise, I mean, we want to be successful for you guys as well, we just.
Well, that's another thing that's gonna start happening too. Got all this stuff going on overseas. It's pretty unsteady. What do you think that's doing to people back here? Anxiety goes up, depression goes up, heart attack goes up. Nobody wants to deal with that. And what you're gonna do is have a county building sitting empty and nobody to respond to those people.
And as far as the essential service goes, and again, I'm speaking on Harneville's side. I was with them Wednesday, last Wednesday night, um, after all this happened. And they are thinking about voting for their district for the essential service. They really feel strongly about it being in the center of the county, at least until an agreement can be made. And I know that's not what you wanna hear, really it's not what I wanna hear. Because if you start having all these other districts branching up and pulling from that, it's, it's gonna hurt.
Well, how would you feel if you only got paid for half your acres? Put all the time and you get paid for a thirty-year acre. Is that all right?
Can you guys crunch the numbers and like run what a scenario would be if you had four, full-time, on, you know, duty? With no, like, just four, eight hours?
She's got in there, if you run the sixteen and eight, you run two people roughly. I took an average of all of our EMTs, or, and all of our paramedics who have been paired together, this is not a driver. It costs about three hundred and six thousand dollars a year for two people. If you go on to what her twenty-four hour duty is where she wants to run a four-person crew, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. What does she have budget?
Is that like with overtime or like just the forty-eight hours without?
That's about ninety-one, ninety-two thousand dollars in overtime, based upon what the situation sits now.
And is that with transfers and everything?
That's a hundred thousand, that's revenues somewhere else. But that's just having four people sitting on her. So she's already, a hundred thousand dollars already given to us for her budget that you guys can pull over.
For next year, right, for twenty-two, twenty-three. If we did the four-man crew.
So having a four-man crew isn't a, well, how is having five or six?
I mean, what are the numbers for that?
Thank you, Carl, thank you.
It's not, it's not, it's not gonna happen.
So then is the question, is a four-man better than six?
Or six.
Or nobody?
Did you run the numbers if you did do the five or six-man crew to see what they would be? Cause I mean, I know what you said the four is, so what would the five or six be? Cause I mean, it's gotta be more than that.
Well, it's what, three hundred, you said three hundred and sixty?
Roughly four hundred and six.
For a medic and an EMT.
Yep.
So just multiply that by whatever you need.
I know, but I mean, then why would the four-man make more sense than five or six?
Don't know yet. We gotta increase the, uh, revenue because of transfer.
But if we had four-man crew, we could do more transfers, I mean, we would gladly do transfers if we could. With four-man, or?
And moving, and moving forward, can we find out if the transfers actually?
One point eight million.
They don't, nothing needs to be.
I, I mean, it's a revenue stream, I'll give you that.
You okay with putting five people on now?
Wearing there.
You okay with putting five people on now?
There is a need to transport patients.
I, I.
I get it, everybody's trying, it's just.
I think a hundred thousand in overtime is better than paying one point eight million for five people. I could be wrong.
That one point eight million is Carrie's plan for what she gets currently are doing.
That's with five people.
No, hers was one point four million dollars is what she came up with.
If you take three hundred and sixty thousand times five, tell me what you get.
One point eight million.
One point eight million.
And it's just wages, it's not including operating, two other ambulances in the county, or one, cause we already ran out of two.
And you gotta do housing for those and.
And you're still gonna have to train people and do orientation.
I'm holding a question I've held a long time that I wanna ask. As you're talking, you're talking about an administrator and nobody has one in there at their places. Who does their payroll and their revenues and their claims and the, somebody's gotta do it, they don't do themselves. Do they? So the checks walk themselves to the audit or the treasurer's office?
They have a secretary in Carroll if that does all that.
So that's, uh, cause I didn't think Sack did that, they send everything. I'm just saying somebody has to do it, okay?
Carroll ambulance has an administrator secretary.
Administrator will be gone soon, and then you'll worry about that.
Fort Dodge Fire, April does all their billing up there, and she's their secretary up there.
So I mean, somebody's doing it.
Right.
For all hers, and we send ours out, we spend another fifty thousand dollars in the net.
Well, Pocahontas has in-house billing. That all goes through the office at the hospital. And Patrick's the director up there, he puts himself on the schedule a lot, until a call goes out, and then he takes himself off the schedule. Or if it's a transfer, see you.
How much does it cost the county in Pocahontas to destroy that hospital?
Well, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
It is.
That's why I said you can't compare Pocahontas.
It's a different animal.
Isn't that kinda what we've been doing? You keep comparing to Sack and Pocahontas.
Story counting, based twenty fours.
It doesn't seem like it's going to be apples.
We're gonna do that.
SAC has its share of problems lately too, like, like their, like the ambulance is all on call. So, but they get their on-call pay of seven fifty or eight fifty an hour. And they're running into the same problems to where all of a sudden, no, no one's showing up on call in Lakeview. Where are those people that signed up and they're not showing up? Then they call SAC. And so you're looking at that amount of extra time by the time they figure out no one's showing up to be there when they should because they're at their other job. So you're jeopardizing lives by trying to save money, which I get, you have to have money to do it. But if the citizens knew, like, if I call nine-one-one and I knew, I'm lucky the ambulance is gonna come from Lakeview, which I feel a lot, living in that county.
I've worked with a couple of those guys, they're not young.
It's scary for me to know that I can't rely on knowing that someone's gonna be there. So if I knew and I had to pay a little more, I would be fine doing that to know that I would get the service that I, you know, I need in an emergency.
That's why we need to be such a service, because general fund will pay for that.
Uh-huh.
Unless we lay off other departments.
So to get the essential services doing what?
For that extra revenue, for that extra.
Bill that they wanna pay to put off any deals this fall.
Best case scenario, Tina, any funds from that, how soon can we expect that?
It's something we gotta sell to people, if they want this essential service, we're gonna have to sell it to the people. You know? You got your book, and if you sell them that, that they're gonna raise their taxes and cost them more money, what am I gonna get from my dollar? You know, what's it gonna do?
It's gonna give you a twenty-four-seven ambulance service, centrally located in the county and able to respond. It's not gonna be three different stations and six, five or six people.
I guess find out first if they've built in partners, if they don't, then it's, so.
It's the reason, part of the reason Fort Dodge Fire took over the ambulance service from Trinity, is because they were more centrally located. I worked at Trinity, Fire was always out at the call before we worked, responded from the hospital. They're centrally located.
I just don't think people know that if they call nine-one-one, that there may or may not be somebody coming.
Fort Dodge Fire had a thirty thousand dollar study done, it said that you can't run two separate, the hospital and Fort Dodge Fire, so it needed to be located underneath one. It wasn't because they're centrally located, cause I've talked to the chief, he's talking about trying to put an ambulance station on the outside of Fort Dodge. Every other, trying to get down to Gower and other places quicker. So it's not because they were centrally located.
It, it was part of it. If you talk to the EMS folks, it was part of it.
I talked to the guy that does the director of that. I work with Steve Harty Rider all the time, I'm chair of the ASMA for this area.
Yeah.
So I work with him and fire department.
So move, so moving forward, are we a three person crew till July or are we?
Proposes July thirty-one.
Would you consider striking the last two motions?
I think if we give us till July, we can figure out how it's running, how the crews are doing with three man. How to bring in like that more help and, and come up with a scenario, I mean.
We've figured it out, we just need time to get them here, get them trained. And they need the confidence of knowing that this trial that we've been doing is what they're gonna get in a month and not be taken away in six. And I know that's just throwing a timeframe out there, but that's what's gonna hurt us. Is these guys have been hired under that stipulation. And we had other ones that were willing to come under that stipulation. And now that stipulation's going goodbye and, you know, they live in Hartford, up by Fort Dodge. They're like. We don't.
West Bend.
Yeah. And we have so, we have some full-time crew members that they can't work twelve hours. And they're dedicated and they've put time in and they're willing. One of them girls does weekends, which is one of the hardest positions to fill.
Single mom that works for.
Maybe you could do like a thirty-six hour shift, that way no one's running into any overtime. And if we have the full.
That's what we said earlier, still, they try to work on the wording.
Like full time, yeah, like.
That's what Cynthia works, this is thirty-six.
Cynthia works thirty-six.
She works thirty-six right now.
See, I just think if everybody just.
Dallas works thirty-six.
Wouldn't be running into all that overpay. And we have enough people to cover it all.
Hmm?
And that would save a whole lot.
Not enough. Every other week.
Yeah, yeah, people. Until like, you know, thirty-six hours and then whatever, I mean. Or vice versa, they'd start at seven A.
Unfortunately, you do have to be flexible to get what people drive to do this.
If they put, people are setting up for salaries, you're getting cut, they only work thirty-six, they won't be happy.
Well, they're getting full duty pay, so if they're working thirty-six and full duty and they wanna pick up PRN somewhere else or do on-call.
Cause they'll.
Somewhere else.
Yeah.
And I know you don't wanna hear that, you had asked once before, why are all of our people picking up PRN somewhere else? Well, we have to.
Would everybody in here be willing to hear thirty-six hours?
And would PRN somewhere else?
Well, you wouldn't even have to.
Thirty-six hours a week? Out of, out of the question.
So. If we're.
I'm gone, I'm gone the moment that happens.
So in a week, we work forty-eight hours, so eight hours of that is overtime, but by per week, we're, what you guys have suggested is we'll cut that down to half or minimum wage.
If it goes back to the rules.
If, if it goes back to the rules, right. So if we're able to cut that to half for those eight hours, what is it gonna cost the difference, or is it even legal to just leave that at straight duty pay instead of paying overtime? What if our duty pay after forty hours or, what if our duty call time after the forty hours goes to still your normal base pay? It's just your on-call wages, your on, your straight time pay.
So anything after forty hours a week would be?
Still straight.
Straight pay, but not overtime or duty call.
Pick up another shift.
Unless you pick up another, if it falls into your normal forty-eight hour window.
Or if you're busy during the night.
Or if you're busy during the night, it's still straight pay, but let's say we are short-staffed, people are sick, people have emergencies, people are gone, someone has to fill in. That third shift coming in, that forty-ninth hour, then goes into overtime. Is that something, I can't speak for everyone and say that that would work.
Should be able to cover that once we get fully.
Right, and that should be able to be covered and we shouldn't have to have that emergency be filled or something like that, but that in my mind saves you a lot of your ti- that time and a half pay that we don't want.
Overtime, so let me call it something else, that eight hours is sleeping time, that is dedicated sleeping time.
Yeah.
Just for the moment, stretch me on call.
Sure.
You're on site, you are reserving eight hours, five to eight hours, you have to have a minimum of five hours.
Five consecutive or five total?
There, that has been a gray area, the intention is uninterrupted sleep, they said if it happens once or twice where it's inter- it's like interfered. They would not be concerned about that, if regularly interrupted sleep.
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna have a problem with that, it should be reserved uninterrupted time that was the intention.
Okay.
All we're required to do in that scenario is pay seven dollars and twenty-five cents minimum.
Which is fine, I get that, but for recruitment purposes with everyone else who's offering school reimbursement more sign-on bonuses, would that be something that would maybe help the recruitment? I can't speak for Lucas and I can't speak for Brandon or anyone else. If, the only thing that would make me not want to be here is that cut to eight hours. Or eight dollars an hour or seven fifty or whatever half pay is. That is kinda the nail on the coffin for me, just for family's sake, I can go do rest on the side and make more money. Do I wanna do that, have a back surgery and knee surgery when I'm forty-five? Absolutely not, but I could go do that.
Can we sit down sometime and go through those numbers?
Yeah, I would love to, if people are willing to do that, I would love to go through those numbers.
Thinking Carrie's twelve hour at the hospital was kinda that way too, because if there was a transfer to Iowa City and then after midnight, we got one to wherever, I think that's what her idea of fresh.
Yeah.
The twelve and twelve as opposed to a twenty-four at the hospital.
And I'm not saying it's gonna.
When I talked to Cynthia, I told her, I says, basically anything like, like nine o'clock to seven in the morning, it's gotta be an extreme emergency. And if they're bothered, you can't bother them in the morning, if they gotta come out at two o'clock and help out, leave them alone till like eleven or so, unless there's a nine one one call.
So maybe, maybe a twelve hour day shift would work at the hospital.
But with her twelve hour shifts, though she also had it in there, on her plan is you're on-call every other weekend, it sounds like none of these guys wanna do that.
Well, it's hard to be there for that.
So that's why I said that plan, set up the fellow to start with, that's in her essential service plan, so to me, that plan doesn't really fly that well.
Great point to bring up, yeah.
So that's why I said, that's why I'd like them, every time I can say, ask Carrie, there's never anything like this. That's why I say it won't work, and I always keep telling them, come up with something and tell us what will work, what can we make work? And there's been nothing except for what she has right now.
I'm not.
So I said, if you're willing to sit down and talk about that.
Saying that that's gonna work, but we're trying to, we're trying, we're trying to get people incentive. And we're trying to get people incentive to come and have retention, and you said earlier in the meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, but people in, uh, SAC County, they don't wanna do on-call, people in Pocahontas don't wanna do on-call.
They're on-call, they're on-call.
Right, but they don't prefer it, I may be putting words in people's mouths. And Carol, they have on-call, but if the reason they don't like that is the pay goes down significantly. But who's to argue that if they can keep it straight throughout? And will it cut our salaries? Sure, or whatever we're getting paid, but it's not cutting it by EMT, nine, ten thousand dollars.
Overtime.
It might cut it a little bit, but that little bit can be that's more reasonable number to live with of loss as opposed to what the others are suggesting. But I mean, if whoever needs to crunch those numbers, I'm not a math guy, so you don't want me crunching them, but.
Well, we still sit down, what's the idea, let's sit down and let's pencil it out.
Sure, yeah.
Like I say, like you always say, cutting our salaries, I think the only place that they tried figuring salaries is in Carol.
Well.
But it's still based back on per hour.
That's my fault for saying salary, hourly, sorry.
You guys are per hour, so you're per hour now getting on duty, I know, like I said, we got the on-call, but we're saying not seven fifty, at least take it up to half, like I said, let's sit down, let's pencil it out, if it's gotta be more, let's look at, let's see, will it fit underneath our budget? Will it work there? Cause like I said, somewhere it's gotta stop, we either gotta furlough you guys or we're gonna lay people off in other departments. Like I said, if you guys ever wanna look at what comes underneath that general fund, we can get you that, you tell us what department you guys feel is not important, and we can do cuts on them, so we can make this work, nobody'll tell me.
Right, what we've gotta figure out is.
For us to say we're the most important department.
I know, everybody.
Everybody gets loose, everybody.
Especially if you need them, you can grade my grammar.
I know, I know.
I, I know how it works.
So what we need to figure out is how we can get people to come and to stay and so that we can expand in the larger picture, that crew in Rockwell City, and then we get fully staffed at that, and we get more people to even come in and we can start spreading and sharing, I came from, I moved up here from Kansas three years ago. I came from a county who had.
Billy.
Yeah, thanks, I came from a county that had a little bit more people and a little bit more money, but they had five ambulances that were county-based that were stationed out. That's a great thing to achieve, every community besides maybe a couple tiny ones that had like sixty people in them, Kansas is great, but they were able to figure that out, they started with two and then they got incentives and got retention, people to build up EMS in that county and people recognize them, they do PR events, everyone loves them, it's great. And they were able to expand, well, we want one, okay, let's see what we can do. And they just start getting more people, we'll move you here. But like you said, it costs money, so we've gotta get it out to the public to see, this is what we're going through, this is what we need, what can we do, what do the voters want?
That's why I said, if we got a minimal plan that we can cover here in the county, then we can do some services over that. But I just remember too, that Cal County's tax level is one of the highest ones around, I've had people sitting there saying that they moved to Carol. Cause they got more stuff in Carol.
Yeah, sure.
Cause there's not housing here, there are taxes, so, uh, so now we're also looking at raising it more for this essential service. So we've gotta figure out, how can we bring people in to live here?
Right.
Isn't there another tax coming off in this?
The, the state right now is looking at, you're talking that they're looking at scooping up our lost tax. That's what we kinda use on fixing up buildings around here, if they pull that away. Now we've gotta repair like secondary roads building, once again, it's rural services and general fund. Now we're gonna need money that you guys need, they'll keep buildings up, so I hope if they don't pass that, cause what, is it a third of that cent or something like that? Or three eighths of that cent supposed to go to the natural resources, trails and other, yeah, that. So they're not gonna try to scoop that and take that, I hope they don't, cause that's.
Yeah, I don't know what it was, but Steve Peterson, when we had our meeting in Farninville, he was saying that now is actually a good time to do this because there is another tax, but I can't remember what he said it was, and I don't know that it was that one.
I know that they're going to the flat tax, but.
Yeah.
Few years down the road, but like I said, they're trying to take more stuff and push more stuff on us to pay. Because that's another thing that we said with the general fund, don't shoot me on this, Chris. But I said, we, everybody, so with all the stuff going on, we have to go like the full-time HR.
Which I do your payroll too when you're gonna.
IT with all this stuff that's going on, so that's more stuff that's coming out of this fund, so we don't have the extra reserves in there. There's a couple of things that we had to take out.
But with.
Deadline to July thirty-first and do the three man. And get time to talk and keep working at this without that day. In there, I mean, we're going in the right direction.
And if we can somehow come to an agreement and let's say hypothetically we change that pay to straight pay throughout. That still gives us that full crew to allow us to keep the one in the county to respond to the people and accommodate the hospital transfers which is that revenue we're kinda missing because we can't fully staff because of the overtime issue.
The three man crew were missing a lot of transfers.
Right.
And there was a very critical one last week, I know she had it out there on Facebook.
Yeah.
I think it was a spleen that burst that they sat and waited.
Yeah.
They couldn't make it, so there was nobody taking there before they could get to Sioux City, I think it was spleen burst.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of major stuff that's going on, people say transfers aren't important.
And that kinda sucks because the people in the county.
If the people are going to be paying for it, they need to know.
Yeah, so if we can get to that point to where we are fully staffed, we can bring in that revenue from, if we have fully staffed and if we're not run to death and it's unsafe, there's no reason not to take transfers and get that revenue.
Cause we have stared into people's faces when they're yelling at us, cause it took us a while to get to wherever they're at because our other unit was out on a transfer. And this is when we were down in Lake City, Lake City, had to go out on a transfer and it was a Gulfstone thing. Emergent, we were notified it was an emergent transfer, could not wait, oh, okay, so it was on a weekend, so we were on-call, we brought the on-call crew to the station, and before we could make it to the station, another call came up at the Lake City area for cardiac arrest, and yeah, it took a while to get there and the only crew available, there was no on-call crew like there is now. There was no on-call crew, we had to look in the family's face, what took you so long to get here? Uh, the hostel said we had to boot scoot and boogie on a transfer for Gulfstone.
Yeah, there, there is an on-call on weekends down Lake City that have been.
But even then, there's some words. Law enforcement, add an AED, law enforcement deploy the AED. Evidence shows the most beneficial thing for that patient, that particular circumstance is an AED, is pushing up our chest. So as bad as that system, as that situation was, that was actually.
Turned out really good.
I, I think what they're, I mean, what they are asking is just to push it back to July thirty-first and and at least we're talking now and everybody's gonna be on the same page.
But would you consider striking the two motions?
Till then.
I'm not for striking the motions, I might be willing to maybe go to like June first, if we can get together and talk and figure, go through some of the figures to see if we can keep upward in this, like I said, if it works, then change totally that system. That time and drop everything else off, I don't wanna keep pushing it out because this thing's gonna go on for a long time, like I said.
I think the, I think the reason that they're pushing for June first is because a lot of those people who are in.
July thirty-first.
For July thirty-first, sorry. Brandon will be a paramedic, I will be paramedic, and those other two, and you can't, and Cynthia, sorry, and you can't. It's hard for them to come in, work here for a month or six weeks or whatever, and then all of a sudden, it just goes away. That's kinda what the boat Cynthia's in right now, she's been here for six weeks, seven weeks.
December.
Or December.
December.
But if you move it back, I don't want you guys coming either thinking that this is what we're gonna switch to.
Well, we totally under, we totally understand that, if after that day comes and you say that none of this is working, you go back to it, that is your guys' decision as a board. We understand that that can happen again.
Would you consider an amendment, because currently how it reads is on-call, and I think, if I'm wrong, you might have sent that duty call.
I keep saying we gotta, and I've always been told, you can't have that many, I keep saying we need to have something like if you're a business. Like if Matt's up there working on his deal and he's on-call, he should go pay more than two dollars and fifty cents if somebody's down here. You got somebody that can leave their business, they oughta be able to get a little bit more, I think, and then if you're working on-call, sitting up here and you can't go home in the station. You oughta get paid more than the person that's on-call, so that's just the wording of it, like, so I said, that's, we're trying to work on, with some of the wording in like the thirty-six hour shift. So, so it works with Cynthia, but that's, we've tried to put some of that stuff together.
And we're talking about the full-time stuff where it's the.
So if you look at our.
Where it says on-call.
If you go look at what is the literature for that that we have.
Full-time, twenty-four hour.
So like, you're referring to the Department of Labor ruling where.
Well, I think somewhere in our protocols or in our.
For the decrease in sleep time?
Um, no, I'm thinking for.
The Department of Labor regulations that require staff to have an agreement with the employer to go down to the eight hours of sleep time, I don't believe we currently have an agreement, do we, Christine?
We, um, I talked about that this morning and yesterday, um, the agreement could be as simple as, no, I don't wanna do that, I'm going to leave.
Could be verbal.
Yes.
But look, I remember too, there was no motion or anything to go to the twenty-four hours either. So technically, that wasn't done legally either.
I think that shows in our pay though.
So I think what he's asking to change in that is, I think there's somewhere in our protocols or our literature in our hiring or whatever.
Policy.
Policy, thank you, it says that duty call is half pay.
Or minimum.
Or minimum wage, whatever's higher, and then on-call is to two fifty, and that states on-call. And I think he's just trying to rephrase on-call. Yeah, sure, and I think that's just something they just wanted to make.
Work on this stuff and some of that stuff can be changed out, and at least we don't hope for working for.
I think they just wanted a clear cut answer, cause that makes a big difference also between duty call and on-call.
And it sounds like a lot of this is with a mind towards an escalating, you know, staffing as we can. In the last EMS essential service meeting, Tina specifically asked Carrie, what would it take to get these people out the door, and Carrie said, if we really push, possibly look at the end of July in terms of getting these people off orientation.
So then that way.
If I recall correctly, all three of you were there when we heard her say that, would you consider amending this date to July thirty-first to reflect that?
And a three-man crew until that time to hold down overhead costs.
Are we gonna keep working on the essential service then?
Well, the talks should keep going on, this meeting was good.
Tell you if that thing gets a little clearer back, there's people all over, I'm gonna vote for this, you're saying Farninville, let's stay centralized. They're not gonna vote for it down there, and as we're doing that, you guys are gonna vote up there. So we're gonna be wasting our time with essential service, I want some kind of plan so you guys know what we're paying for, and then you guys bill. So we're gonna be wasting our time in the essential service, I want some kind of plan, so you guys know what we're paying for, and then you guys bill on top of that to sell to them, so we can get to that by November.
So that way we can, we can be confident for people having on board.
If we do Lake City, you know, we're doing the transfers, you know, that's the only goal, and, and that's our goal too, is to make everybody happy and have full-time service to meet all of the needs.
Yeah, and our goal is, I mean, we are a nine-one-one service, let's, let's not, let's not forget that, I mean, that's what we are here for first most and foremost. And great, if we can have a four-person crew to do transfers, that's awesome, but there's, there's no reason we gotta have a separate station, a separate this, a separate that, to do it. Um, and I think a lot of the towns in the county are saying, oh, if you're gonna put, if you're gonna fund an ambulance down there, then you're gonna fund one here, or we're not voting for this.
Would a, would a driver, like at Lake City, and this is where my knowledge is milking, would a driver work at the hospital with a, a paramedic for all transfers? Or is there a need?
It could, but your driver's not gonna, you're not gonna get any reimbursement from the hospital on that driver, cause there's nothing they can do inside the hospital.
Well, they could try.
But you could pay a driver a lot less, I mean, I mean.
Oh, you could.
We can have them there.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just chugging over there.
I think what.
So is, is the three-man crew that you're doing right now, how's that working?
It's sustainable.
Don't talk about the pay or.
It's, it's sustainable.
There's only been a few instances. I mean, we didn't even call in and have someone come in when the transfer is needed, you know.
Yes, they can.
But if, if there's three ambulance calls, Carly, it's ugly fast, I mean, but it does anyway, even if there's two full-time cruisers.
You can't, you can't plan for that.
Five car crash up on twenty, it won't work.
We have that many here, I don't know.
We're fortunate that we have Farnerville and, and Laurville, you know, I mean, that's, that's a huge asset, it really is, but. The three-man crew does work for right now.
So the plan of getting an ambulance here, Manson and Lake City, I think the public needs to know that that's something that's not gonna happen overnight, that's five, six, ten-year plan, and, and I think, yeah.
And there's gonna be.
And I think that's something that needs to be cleared with them, and they need to know about when it comes to this essential service thing, so that, and we have a plan as a service to let them know if this is passed, where we're trying to grow with this, and not just say, just to get two ambulances at the moment. They need to know the whole story.
What time do you give money to grow our service, and to being able to cover the three major population centers in the county?
Yeah.
When I worked at the hospital for the ambulance, when they owned it, I only worked twelve-hour shifts there, and we would do the nine-one-one, or we'd work in the ER, and then we'd go out and do calls, we didn't have the night shift or anything else like that, so. That was when it fell, you know, back on the county evidently. So there's a lot of options if, you know, we hire somebody and they wanna work, you know, and the hospital wants to pay him, you know, to ER tech, or, and to have that ambulance down there to go out on the transfer. You know, and things like that, we're willing to talk and set something up, it's just.
Twelve and, twelve-hour shifts and twenty-four-hour shifts gives you a higher.
Coverage rate.
Well, coverage rate, it gives you the opportunity to hire other people, I prefer twenty fours, some people can only work twelves, and some people only work twelves at night, and so if you keep that. Cause I do the scheduling, it can be a headache sometimes, but we can make it work, I mean, it might take a little longer, one week or a month at a time, but it's doable, and I think that broadens who you can hire.
That's why we live for twenty-four hour shift with twelve-hour PRN, but like I said, we gotta work on the wording, to be able to work up to.
But.
You're wanting the twelve-hour shift.
But we have, let's say, we have a employee right now who works twelve-hour call, or twelve-hour shifts, and she works thirty-eight hours, or thirty-six hours a week, so she is technically full-time.
So, yes, and so.
And I think that's where her problem comes in with this, is that she works, it stays twenty-four hours, and then she goes to thirty-six, or twelve-hour shifts PRN, well, if she's PRN, this hurts her on insurance and everything else, so that's where her concern is.
So I brought that up, as did Kerry.
Okay.
With this change, that that has created some problems or exceptions, that's why we're discussing a weekend package where somebody could still have thirty-six hours and exceed that thirty-hour threshold.
Okay.
Full-time and pre-teen benefits.
Great.
So that's already come up on the radar, like, and we would call it weekend package as incentive for somebody to have benefits and work.
Awesome. Sure, cause I know, I know two nurses that live in Manson who work at the hospital, and they're on a weekend package, and.
We're, we're modeling the nursing structure for that. Kristy, is that the, we have two cases of two gals that work twelve-hour shifts, the other one can't be away from her home more than twelve. Correct, I am aware of that, where, we, these have been brought to the attention. Okay, I didn't know if we were talking about one and not the other, or both. No, no, no.
Cause when it comes to that weekend package, yeah, they both be separate, one would want that, one wouldn't.
You, you have to be careful with exceptions, because it's, you don't wanna give someone like preferential treatment, because it is, but we understand this is kinda grandfathering people into a, a structure that's gonna be financially sustainable. How can we keep our staffing, the weekend package was one option, or the other.
Yeah, I love the weekend package, because that's like why I haven't gone full-time for many years, because my husband would throw a fit up, I have to work a weekend, and. He doesn't, you know, want me to work at all, and so that's why, like, I, I love working here, and I do at least twenty-four up to seventy-two hours a week with on-call too, but. But I haven't made that leap, and I'm grateful I have it now with every change going on right now, but I would love to be able to work and do some twelves, and do like thirty-six hours, you know, like. And then have it good with having people that would want a weekend package, or to take that other twelve, you know, like, I think that's just, it helps, and there are other people out there that would like that too. To where it could be beneficial, you know, there's some people that like all holidays, and that wanna work, you know, that love the holidays, and there's others that don't want holidays, so. If there's something that can work like that to where there's not, you know, I think that wording and to set something up like that would be great.
So both, both of board, and Kerry have recognized that there may be some scenarios that we have to work.
To get answered.
What was the question?
That would be great.
So can we push it back to July thirty first?
Like I said, I'm willing to go to June first, I'm willing to sit down and talk about things, and then, if it looks like things are different, then we'll totally change it. I'll make a motion to put it out to July thirty first.
I think July thirty first.
Including the training, not including, I mean, adding.
Adding, also increasing.
Yeah.
Let's, how it goes, that's my motion.
Okay, the motion, I'll second it, I'll second it. The motion to second to extend the date till July thirty first, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion Kerry, move out to July thirty first.
What else, what else did you want in that motion, Carl?
This one, to clarify, when I say three-man crew, I'm not saying they can't train people.
That will give time to get everybody.
You're saying it's a three-man.
The three.
If it's gonna change, it's probably gonna change, that's when it's gonna change.
I think by not upsetting the apple cart just yet, will get the people and get it in place, and hopefully communicate better between all of us.
Those ones will.
Because you and I can have a conversation that doesn't make any sense to the other people in this room, cause you and I are just living in budgets, and they're looking at their lives, so we all need to be on the same page to make it work.
Would you be clarifying what your amendment was?
The amendment was to extend out, continuing the twenty-four hour shifts, three, three-man crew, three-person, until July thirty first.
So the wording on those two prior motions, instead of being May first, is now July thirty first?
Correct, just on, on the first one.
Well, the first one, not on the.
Well, second, we'll work on the second one, cause that, that needs cleaned up, so.
The duty time.
Yeah, the first one, you're talking, the one that was.
The second one has to do with Kerry taking.
What?
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm ready.
We'll, we'll address that, so.
I think another meeting like this and to keep talking in the right direction, I mean, I think this meeting made a lot of progress today.
And I, I will say before, we are working towards the essential service, we passed the draft on last Saturday, so we, we've got that in motion, we just need to make sure that what's happening here. Helps with the essential service cleaning up the language and what we're gonna do, but we have started that process.
Yeah, cause that's definitely what we gotta get on the page, if we're gonna get that on the voting deal, to even get a halfway decent vote on it, you know, cause it's gonna vote no, you know, or if they don't know what's going on out there.
I think he's got something to say here.
Mr. Webber has something.
Hard, can I say I'm hard?
Yes, you can.
I'm not an EMT, um, I appreciate all of the work you guys do, I've never ridden an ambulance in my whole life, Joe Monk. I had an accident, a farm accident, I was laying out there, I got my leg stuck in the vacuator, that's what happened, these big corner vacuators, didn't think that could happen, but I'm getting a little older in between time, I was in there forty-five minutes. I don't know what happened, couldn't get ahold of anybody, I called, I went, where in the heck, cause my sheriff had, these guys are listening, nine-one-one call. And then I looked up in Manson, was anybody here from Manson?
I was, I was working the day that the call came.
No, I understand, I didn't notice, I thought everybody was on full-time, not just a farmer, I pay taxes, these guys are down there, Farm Bureau, I'm a Farm Bureau worker. These guys are down here explaining how they're trying to keep their tax load down, tax load down, the mental health problem was a big one, and they gotta fight all these things trying to make this through balance out. I think everybody should take a riding back, like ambulants, that, uh, when they find the, the police scanner, Lenny Sennscheck, got my truck was shut off. All they needed to do is shut the truck off and get me out of there.
Actually, that was me.
That was Dave and I that were there.
Pat and I were the first two.
I just feel my hip pulling apart, I tell a lot of people in Vietnam, I'm a veteran, I was over in the bloodiest part of it, and I'm thirty more people. And I knew if my hip pulled off, it wasn't really painful, I'd just be pretty anxious to go into sleep. The path to words, I gotta think, and Lenny Sennscheck and Dave Anderson over there, he has to be at two miles, anyone's over there.
I'd have been there quicker, that semi wouldn't go any faster.
I had my police scanner on, and I had my phone, if I couldn't have got a hold of nine-one-one and gotten ahold of those two guys, I'd have went on through that thing. I appreciate what you're doing, as a taxpayer, I own acres of land here, and I know they're always trying to get the tax budget down, and I don't know when they determine the dollars allocated to the EMTs. I think that they should, uh, I'm very willing to pay about fifty cents an acre of whatever my land, and I think most taxpayers would be to raise their budget or some. I know we fight to keep these budgets down, that's why we have these guys up here, so that they keep our budgets down, so that we don't have to be paying like the Russians and everybody else. I think there's needs where we need it, I think that we should get some more allocations out, and what about, uh, running some fundraisers where you could get money in, I know there's people that have estates and things that give large amounts of funds. To the hospitals, Trinity Hospital and stuff we do, and there are different things, I don't know whether this would help out.
We're, we're not allowed to do fundraisers.
I don't, not private or, or volunteer, I don't think we can do fundraisers, I, I'd have to check, but I don't think we can.
HR would know the answer to that.
HR doesn't know.
Lawyer.
Yeah, HR appears to be the county attorney.
I was.
I think nonprofits, you know, why you're. I mean, you could donate a phone. I just kidding.
But, uh, I think that would be.
Yeah, but, but you're a volunteer, I, I just don't.
The, the costs are going up, just like my department, I feel like, you know, quite dull, but it's a lot this year.
It's gonna get worse.
These costs are going up too, and I think we're gonna have to figure out a way to allocate some of these services, we're gonna have to have some more funds allocated to them to operate properly. And I think these guys know best of what their needs are, and I think we need to listen to them very strong for something to kind of, uh, work together. And I, I like it, Carl, let him get one more time to work this out.
The purpose is to serve, uh, another thirty days, forty days, fifty days, if we can get it done, it sounds like there's some good people coming in, thank you.
And I wanna thank you guys again, super thank you.
Listening, Marvin, when you said.
We just had two people when I opened the ambulance, one was the driver, and the guy that you had my pants, what was left of my pieces on me, uh, to work on me, and that was funny, but I was worse than the person that was driving, I had to carry her.
Maybe it was Matt? Was that Matt?
Just remember, you guys, he just said I can drive faster.
No, you can't.
I was the driver.
And stuff here, we're gonna have, we got twin lakes, we got a lot of population up there, older people, have them drowning as possible, there's different things, we need cover here and have them cover there, you know, how many I think?
And you said we are trying to get enough, another fifty cents, our general fund gets three dollars and fifty cents per thousand, that's all we get, so now we have to make all that stuff fit underneath that, we can't just raise that up to four dollars, that's a.
Who, do you, you're, you're telling me to put in a couple tasks and put an allocation to state, or we have to.
It's, certain funds have different levels, like, uh, rural service, I think it's three point nine five, this one's three and a half, the one that does their health insurance, that has no cap on it, but we can't move their salaries to that one. You can do a lot of people there, that's why I said there's only certain things we can pay with certain funds, so we only have certain amount of dollars to make everybody put on it. Like, one of the other things I forgot that we added on there too, was the other deputy kind of things, and then the chief deputy slid up there, so that's why a couple of towns are fighting to keep police protection, so we had that on. So that's why I kept always asking everybody when we have these on, what's more important, our deputies, ambulance, IT, HR?
I almost called Jordan.
I will say with ours though, it cost, what was the bottom line difference, I took a lot out of the budget, that it was less than ten grand is what I added on to add that deputy by cutting.
Well, that explains your budget, I think.
I'm just saying, it's not just throwing just me under the bus.
No, no, that's good.
I thank you guys for being there, and thank you for your service.
That's why Luke, are you off all this week?
You're coming Thursday, aren't you?
I will be off a little longer than that.
These guys have a very hard job, I know, I said they're hard to drill, we tell those others, right, they cut the taxes here, and cut it here, and cut it here, but we still need services, uh, practice, some of these services are very important when you need a person, and a hard tack is. Need someone out there right now for, and it's, uh, they do a very important job in our society, keeping this all going.
Get some, we'll figure some numbers out, or, thank you for coming in, thank you for the civil discussion, it was nice and long.
Thank everyone, it was an awesome meeting today.
It was. Thank you for coming in.
Billy, you are horrible.
Why, why don't you, why don't you just go on?
Did you stop, no, you didn't.